Trustee Burchi?
Here.
Trustee Covington?
Here.
Trustee Herron? Trustee Hill?
Here.
Trustee Montez?
Here.
Vice President Sierra?
Here.
President Johnson? Thank you.
I would, if you'll indulge me. I really just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to you. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you and with each of you as individuals. And as I look at the faces up here, I think President Johnson, you were the only one who was here when I started. And I really appreciate what I think is the mutual respect that you and I have shared over the years. So, thank you to you, sir. And then there's the staff. And I was trying to think about what to say about the staff. And I was reminded of some words of that great, modern philosopher, Conan O'Brien. Now, if you might recall, he was picked to do the, host the Tonight Show. And after about six months, they said, never mind, and they dumped him. In his last show, he gave a speech, toward the end of the speech, he said this. "Nobody in life gets exactly what they thought they were going to get. But if you work really hard and you're kind, amazing things will happen." And I'll tell you, these people are some of the most dedicated, hardworking, and kind people you'd ever want to work with. And they make a whole lot of amazing things happen. Not the least of which may have been putting up with me for eight years, but, you know. But thank you again to everyone. It's been a privilege to have been just a small part of the oldest, the largest, and the best doggone park district in the state of Illinois. Thank you.
President, on November thirteenth, I think I had, I'm supposed to get my computer to display this right now, but I think that was the meeting that was... Question, did it let it out there in verbatim? Am I right about that?
Yeah, it was one of, yes.
And everyone enjoyed me. In terms of taking a look at that, here's what I'd like to propose to everyone. I'm gonna say this briefly, then I'll make a motion. I just think it's wrong that we deviate from our standard practice, and I've said this before, for a particular case, have verbatim minutes. Having said that, I also appreciate that I've talked to a number of you that there's some feeling that we should have verbatim minutes in respect to this particular discussion. I just don't want to see it get into the position where in the future, it's like, well, let's have verbatim minutes on this because we did the last time. So, I want to propose is, I'm gonna suggest that what we do is we take the November thirteenth meeting as a whole, that we take the verbatim section that runs six or so pages, seven pages. The text at the end of the minutes, and we ask...
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I believe October second minutes are the minutes that have the verbatim or the transcript?
Well, this will go for October second.
Okay.
So, October second.
Yes, sir. And November thirteenth, there was no transcript in those minutes.
October second, though.
Yes, sir. Correct, yeah.
Yeah, those got deferred to the January meeting. If we want to try to pull them here, we can.
Okay, sorry.
Take that verbatim section, make a catch-up DM, and ask you between now and our January meeting, we're gonna talk about this. Do it in normal review, and make a short, succinct, but complete review, and give it on, and present that to us. For approval, if you did that, I would vote for it.
I'm happy to do so. I was just waiting for the directive, really, to move ahead with that.
If everyone's okay with that, then I'll also make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the November thirteenth or November twentieth minutes. But I would hope we could decide anything with the October minutes.
Tim, would you amend your motion? I want, I need a separate vote on the second, third minutes either way.
Okay, I'll move to approve the November thirteenth minutes.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herron? Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now I make a motion to approve the November twentieth minutes?
I'll second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Abstain.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
With the other item, as I discussed, can we get the, have the October minutes we talked about, is that okay, that procedure I described?
Yes, it is, yes. Okay. Staff reports? Executive Director?
Good evening, everybody. A couple of quick notes for everyone. I want to thank our Riverplex team and our marketing team who have worked to revise the Riverplex website. That went live yesterday, today, what? Last week. It all runs together, everybody's so busy. So, last week, I hope if you have not had a chance to check it out, that you please do so. We are also working on some updates to some signage in the facility. So, over the next couple of weeks, I hope you'll go down and take a look at that as well. You have in front of you at your spaces, the 2025 Camps and Sports Guide. We wanted to make sure that you could see that. That outlines our programming for the beginning of 2025. This is a great time for people to take a look at that and consider gift cards or other ways to engage families and experiences to, as a holiday gift. We also offer a discount on our different memberships. The more you buy, the more you save. So, these are great things to consider, as none of us need more things to take care of. I also wanted to give you just a quick heads up that there may be business that we do reach out to the board to vote on prior to Christmas. We were the recipient of a very, very generous private gift from someone who is a longstanding supporter of Proctor Recreation Center, who is interested in investing in some video equipment to allow for recording of some of the programs that happen there. Any of you who've been down to see Black History Month or some of the other programs that the Dream Squared Kiddos put together with Jenna McLeod and the other staff there, they are certainly recording-worthy. And so, this donor had it invested in the audio previously, and he's asked for us to invest in some video equipment as well, and some video experiences that augment both Proctor, but also the Photography Club that is hosted at Logan through the Moonlight Coalition. So, his goal is that we are able to have that video equipment in place for the Black History Month celebration at the end of February. Everybody's pretty aware of lags in delivery and time. So, as our IT team works with the Proctor staff to identify what those items are, if we reach that point where the threshold requires board approval, we will be coming to you with a detailed staff recommendation prior to Christmas so that we can get those ordered before the end of the year. So, I didn't want that to be a surprise, but it is certainly something that time is of the essence in order for us to be able to have that equipment onsite and installed for the February event. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, I also do want to highlight that this weekend, on Saturday, if you, well, a couple of things. Christmas, 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 December, 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 right? If you haven't been to Luthy Lights, please try to, we will, it will be open both this weekend and next week. Next weekend is extended through the 23rd. But we had a really great opening weekend last weekend. We hope people will check that out. Our Luthy staff and Zoo staff and events team have outdone themselves with the decorations. And we can, we have a couple more things up our sleeve for this coming weekend that we look forward to installing tomorrow and Friday, weather allowing. We also have Frosty's Giveaway on Saturday at Proctor. I believe that's sold out, but it's a great experience and a great way for us to support the kiddos in Peoria. We also do have some tickets available, I believe, for Brunch with Santa on Saturday at the Zoo. That's another opportunity to be able to celebrate the holidays. So, lots of things going on. For those of you who have heard me lament about the train and its delivery, that someday we're actually going to have a holiday celebration with like a Polar Express theme. We have received information that the train is, if it's not on its way right now, it will be very, very soon. So, we look forward to driving that train through Gleno Park in the cold weather whenever it gets here. So, lots to celebrate this holiday season. Now, I will answer any questions if you have them.
Any other questions of the Executive Director? That you want to say anything about the Columbia Park?
Thank you, President Johnson. I also want to, we have all kinds of things, much to be grateful for this time of year. I want to thank the City Council last night who approved the allocation of $450,000 to support some improvements at Columbia Park. I would be remiss if I didn't note just quickly, first of all, thanks to Becky Fredrickson for being there, and Alicia, and President Johnson, and Trustee Burchi was there as well in support of that agenda item. There was some commentary made, and certainly I do want to celebrate and express gratitude to the city for honoring the partnership that we have with them. We serve the same people. And so, by being able to collaborate together, we are able to provide a vibrant place to live. If you saw the livability scale from US News World, or whatever that is, US News and World Report, yeah, we were the highest-ranked city in Illinois and in the top 100. So, certainly lots of positive things happening in Peoria, and that is happening in large part because of the collaborative nature in which many of our public bodies work together. So, we appreciate that. I know there were some folks who expressed some concern, but only when we do things together do we get better. So, we appreciate the city's ongoing commitment to help to support some of the improvements that we are able to do together to support our shared constituencies.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That just goes to prove that the peer partnership, and because of your hard work, the staff here at the partnership, and the leadership with the executive team, the board, the work that you do, and everyone appreciates the peer partnership, it really does. And to have that type of relationship that we have is really just great. And I can't, I can't say enough for all the work that you guys do. And it is, you know, people understand the behind-the-scenes things that each of you do. And to have that, the City Council and the school district also support us as they have, I think it's a great thing, I really do.
Me too.
Thank you. Mr. President, some of the comments made last night made me think that perhaps we could do a better job of tooting our own horn about what money we bring into this community. And I know that, I've seen before, I know everyone here has seen it before, where some organizations will say, you know, because of these activities, such amount of tax dollars was raised for the community, or because of this, so much, so many hotel nights were spent, et cetera, et cetera. Just to build on what you just said, it seems to me if we could put together some statistics like that and have them easily at hand for all of us as trustees, but as well as the staff, that might come in handy in responding to some of the questions about finances.
That's true. I certainly do agree. But, yeah, that's a very good point. We're very modest, we don't want to sound toot our horn, but we are. We are second to none. I believe that sincerely. And from what I get, and when we visit these, when we go to the conferences, state and the state, and also international, PR is still recognized. So, really, we really count ourselves blessed that we have that type of reputation. Okay. Moving along, any other questions of the Executive Director? All righty. We have the Superintendent of Planning, Design, and Construction Report?
Monthly reports before you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. We're just trying to wrap things up as the weather starts to get pretty cold.
Anyone have any questions of Becky? Okay, seeing none. Chief of Police?
Good evening. Before you is the activity report for November. We're happy to take any questions.
Chief, one of the first items is case 24215. And it involved possession of a controlled substance and a vehicle impoundment. I'm curious, I know that when the feds, quote-unquote, do something like this, they impound the vehicle, and they're authorized to sell it and keep the money. Is that the kind of thing that we do too, or what happens here?
That is a different approach with a similar vernacular. When we impound the vehicle, which is a new ordinance that we enacted, I believe, around June, July of this year, is that we're able to hold on to that vehicle based on an ordinance violation. And to release that vehicle, it will require the owner to put up $500. So, we are not in the business of seizing and then doing any kind of forfeiture. It's just more of an additional penalty for violating an ordinance of ours, which is there was controlled substances on the park property.
I appreciate what you said, and especially you reminded me about the fact that we did pass that ordinance. Is this the first time we've had reason to use it?
No. We have, since the enactment in June or July, again, we've had approximately, just off the top of my head, I think five or six impounds, which included traffic offenses. This one is a drug offense. I believe most of them were more traffic offense than anything.
And had they all been retrieved by the owner eventually?
Yes. At this point in time, they have paid the $500 impound, and the vehicles have been released back to the owners.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Have we had any concerns or situation with overnight camping in our parks or anything of that nature?
Nothing that has come to mind more than the ordinary amount that we've had. But nothing, nothing has jumped up to say that we're having any more issues more than less than we already have.
Than we already have, okay.
I'm sorry, there was just one other one. And I had, I don't know, okay, so it's 24216. And the case summary is Car versus Concrete?
Yes. Our officer actually was on or going from one park to another and came across this in the 2000 block of Pioneer. And the city was backed up on some calls, so our officer handled the situation. And the situation was this, that a citizen, private citizen, drove his vehicle into a freshly poured concrete pad. So, with that, naturally, we do a non-crime for insurance purposes and what have you. So, each party, being the property owner that just poured the concrete and the car owner that caused the damage, would have a report. So, we just did that very much as an assist. Not a good night.
Okay. Any other questions to Chief Green? Chief, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, we have committee reports, the DEI Committee Policy Revision Updates.
Yes.
Trustee Sierra?
Yes. So, if you recall, I want to say in October, DEIA presented a policy timeline, but also gave a heads-up that we'll see some policy out of the committee for this year. So, before you, you have the recommendation for, sorry, I'm trying to pull that up. Would you happen to have it handy, Emily? My internet isn't working.
You're fine. So, the recommendations before the board tonight, this is the, it was presented at the last board meeting. It was a review of an addition of an introduction to the policy manual. It is not specific policy, but it does set the tone for employees and those who come in contact with the park district about expectations as far as culture. It also covers, there's a policy that talks about, bless you back there, indigenous peoples. I think we spent some time talking about that at the last board meeting. It includes the welcoming resolution that was passed previously by the board. So, it is an opportunity to show those who are interested and those who review our policy manual our commitments to being well-savvy.
Thanks, Emily. Just in time, my computer loaded. So, that being said, I'll entertain any comments or questions, or I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So, it's not exactly policy?
Technically not. So, these are modifications to the employee handbook for the most part, Emily?
So, it's an introduction. So, right now, our policy manual has a square at the beginning that just shows, you know, this is what it, how it impacts your employee status. What we're doing is adding some additional language that lets people just understand what our priorities are as an organization and the context in which our policy manual is established.
Okay. So, I guess I, the way I understand a policy manual is when it's from the first letter of the policy manual to the last letter. Is that not considered policy?
It is, this is not, this does not govern employee activity or performance. It does not govern the specifics of how this board operates. It is policy in that the board has already approved, for example, the welcoming resolution as a commitment to make sure that all of our facilities are open and accessible to all members of our community. And so, by just, by placing them at the beginning of the policy manual, it is the desire of the DEIA committee and staff who presents this with them to show anyone who is looking at that policy manual where those policies are grounded. And it is in a commitment to accessibility and inclusiveness and equity and diversity across our organization. So, as shared with you outside of these meetings, I think it's fair to share that we have shown you an example of what that formatting could look like, that it does lay out differently than the policy manual. But it does, our intent is to frame this in a clearer way for, I think especially for staff who are presented with that policy manual at the beginning of their employment, to have that be a part of their understanding of the kind of organization that they are joining.
So, I mean, just to be clear, I don't disagree with any of the wording, any of the intent of that introduction. But the question I have to ask then is, if it's not exactly policy and staff doesn't follow those lines that's in that resolution, that's not a violation of policy then? Let's just say, I mean, just to say that somebody operates outside the intent of that resolution.
That's handled in a different space. I don't know that you would, you would discipline them for not following policy. There would be other reasons that you might discipline if they didn't follow those things, but it would not be tied to the introduction of the policy manual where those pieces are presented. Brianna, do you want to add anything to that? I'm sorry, I sort of took over there for a second, I apologize for that.
You would have said everything I intend to say. The introduction to the policy manual is sort of a foreword. It establishes the framework for which we expect employees to behave themselves, the core competencies we want them to have when working with all the various people that we serve. If they were to act outside of the welcoming resolution, I would say they were probably being discriminatory, and that would end up in a discipline or a conversation with HR. So, there is recourse that could happen, but this welcoming resolution is to set the framework that we are a welcoming space for anyone who wants to utilize services that we offer.
Okay, well, you know, then I just have to ask for clarification by our legal.
On what?
There was a question as to clarification on what?
So, I think the appropriateness of...
I mean, that's up to you, it's your manual. You can put whatever you want in it as a board. I mean, and I think it's been explained, I just see it as kind of helps put the policies in context. The framework of this is why we're doing it, and this is what we're doing.
Well, and it codifies our commitments to DEIA, vibrancy, even environmental sustainability.
And there was something similar, not so much in content, but there were other components in this manual, at least since I've been here, about your pride model and those sorts of things. So, this isn't something out of left field. It's sort of updating those sorts of things that you had in your manual before. So, if they, if staff acts contrary to that resolution that's approved that's in the book, then it's not violating policy?
There are other elements of the policy manual that address discriminatory behavior that that would be, you would pull the policy that they have violated, not necessarily the welcoming resolution as the target for that. You'd recognize that the welcoming resolution reinforces that, but there is policy language in there about discrimination and treatment of others, that that would be the policy violation.
Steve, I think you raise a really interesting question. Not to be geeky here, but I mean, to me, it depends, it depends on how you define policy in regard to. I would say that any resolution we pass is in the end our policy, whether it finds itself in the policy manual or not. To your point, though, I guess I would ask this question because of, you've raised this. Do we have any, do we, within the policy manual, do we have a section that is identified at the punishment, so to speak, the consequences for not following the policy manual per se?
Shalish, you want to speak to progressive discipline that's included in the policy manual?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, a part of the onboarding, oh, sorry. So a part of the onboarding, all employees are expected to sign a document, uh, I guess saying that they'll abide by the policy and procedural manual, correct? There is like a document that says, I've read the procedure and policy manual and I agree to both.
Yes, when, can you hear me? Can you?
I can.
Okay, thank you. Um, when a person is hired, they do receive the policy manual and they sign an acknowledgement that they are in receipt of it and their responsibilities to understand all the items that are within the policy manual. And when you are speaking, um, a manner of discipline in the policy manual, there are lists of things which you can be disciplined for in the policy, but we don't name everything, but in our policy manual, I'm trying to.
So I get walking into it.
But it talks what you can be disciplined for, talks about, for example, without citing it to you, without finding it real quick, your behavior, violating any illegal things, drug and alcohol, tardiness, all those things you can be disciplined for. Um, and then we have progressive discipline, okay? Um, you will recall this, um, you can receive a coaching, a coaching is a, hey, you violate this, we'll give you opportunity, maybe you weren't trained, but please don't do it again. If you do, you be subject to progressive discipline, then you move to verbal, then you can move to written, then you can move to suspension and ultimately termination. But our policy allows us to skip anything due to the severity of the infraction. I'll buy.
I'm sorry. Were you done, I apologize.
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, well, I was gonna say too, um, I, I mean, I, first of all, I don't have any problems being here, but I, I just, I want to say that that everyone realizes, I, I mean, this was passed four years ago, four and a half years ago. This resolution here, yeah.
Yes.
Um, I mean, I understand, my friends, that this doesn't just apply to staff, this applies to us. And so if, and, and if, if we find ourselves in the policy manual, then the reason I ask that question is, is we also can be subject to discipline. Perhaps under our, um, code of conduct, um, per virtue of violating this, uh, provision. Our provision in here, again, specifically mentions volunteers, which I guess we are, but then it mentions trustees by name too. Again, I, I don't have a problem with this, but it, it just struck me, Steve, when you raised that issue, that there are a number of issues that lawyers would argue about that arise out of, arise out of having this, this location. Again, let me make clear, I have no problem with it being here.
Yeah. Well, the only opposition I really have to this is the procedure for putting it in place, that's really all. Because I think that committees make recommendations. And then anything that goes for policy needs to be reviewed by the whole board before it goes to the board for a reading is all.
Well, this was presented, so.
Well, it was in last time, but I mean, there wasn't a whole, a discussion of the whole before it was approved to go to the board. And I, that's all, that, that's really by my, my concern. Because without that type of procedure, any committee with just two voting trustees can approve and forward any type of policy change to the board. And I don't think two, uh, uh, board members are enough to forward it for final approval. I think it needs to be, the board as a whole, I believe, makes policy.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, based on how you described it, that concern is absolutely legitimate. Um, I think, Steve, it may be best you and I offline, so I can make sure that DEIA is meeting your expectation of pipelining info. Because the way that we presented this piece of, uh, policy would be, we presented it at the last board meeting, that would have been the time for us to have discussion. And then any revisions would have taken course over the, uh, taken place over the course of last board meeting and this board meeting.
This is the second reading, right?
Yeah, this is the second reading, I, I think it needs, it, the, uh, the review needs to be done before the first reading and then it's approved to go to the board. That's how I see it.
Got it, so you're saying before a committee makes a formal recommendation?
Yes.
The board needs to review it?
I think so, because I believe that the whole, board as a whole makes policy, not, not just two voting trustees.
Well, that's not how it's happening, when you say just two trustees, that's not inaccurate.
Well, I, I know, but you know, that's, that's, that's what it looks like.
Okay, let's offline, let's figure it out.
I, I just have one other issue to raise, and I apologized, Brianna, to you for not thinking of this earlier when, when you were very kind to listen to some of my thoughts about language here. But, um, and I, I, I make no pretense to be a historian, but having said that, uh, in the first, and I'm glad that we're having an acknowledgement of our land's history, I think it's important and I love the way that this is stated. But I think it's wrong to say, historically wrong to say, our organization acknowledges that we operate in the traditional lands of the Peoria tribe and peoples. That is true, but before the Peoria tribes, there were the, I, I think the Hopewell, um, culture was in this area. So I wonder if wouldn't be more accurate simply to say, uh, the lands of, uh, Native American tribes and peoples and then go on from there, rather than just limit it to that.
I agree, um, the reason that I wanted to be pointed to my language is to acknowledge the tribes that lived in this specific region of the nation. But through this discussion and through some of this critique and feedback, I am open to modifying anything that's needed, um, based on all of your discretion.
Right. I, I think that history is accurate that I stated, but, um, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm subject to learn from someone more educated than me on this.
So with that being said, I can make it, can I make a motion on this?
We have a motion on the board, on the floor now.
Do we?
We need a second. Didn't, um, didn't you make a motion already for this?
No, I hadn't, but I'll, um, go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve this policy with the verbiage revision that Tim just described, uh, being Native American instead of Peoria.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Question?
I just want to say, I, it's only because of procedure that I will vote against this. Uh, I don't, I have, I believe in the intent of the resolution. But it's the procedure that worries me, bothers me.
Yeah, I think, I think when you and I offline, the procedure may be cleared up, you, you're hinting, you're discussing a point that we discussed in other capacities, being the committee structure, right? The committee structure as it stands now is designed to do exactly what we're doing now. So I, you are more than welcome to take whatever position.
Yes.
But that, that is just how we're designed now, but I know where you're going.
There was a motion on the floor and there was a second. Is, question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
No.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Finance Committee? Municipal advisor agreement?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we're going to, uh, be presenting a, a motion tonight to select a municipal, um, advisor. By way of very quick background, then I'll turn this over to Carrie, is that at the last finance committee meeting, which I think six of us attended, we had a discussion, uh, following a, um, presentation by three potential, uh, municipal advisors. Uh, and that discussion led us to, um, determine that we would present to the board for discussion and, uh, vote of the selection of Spear Financial, uh, to be the municipal advisor for us in some upcoming, uh, financial transactions we'll be having, so, uh, we think we're gonna be having. So with that, let me turn it over to Carrie.
Thank you, uh, as trustee Birchey said, a finance committee and, um, other members of the board also joined finance committee. I want to thank everybody for coming that evening and, and going through the process and, um, reading all of the, the information that you received, it was a lot for preparation of that meeting and a lot to sit through, it was a two and, two and a half hour meeting. Um, so thank you, everybody, for your diligence and, um, helping us to, uh, figure out who we thought would be best. Uh, so Spear Financial is in your packet, the contract is in the package, um, to introduce him beyond just the little squares you saw in the finance committee. Anthony Muselli from, uh, from Spear Financial is here, I'm gonna come up, Anthony. Um, he just was in the area, wanted to stop by at tonight's board meeting and introduce himself so that you can actually see a real face and not just a little screen square face.
Appreciate it, uh, thank you, everybody, Anthony Muselli is Spear Financial, uh, we're thrilled for the recommendation. Really excited to be working, you know, hopefully working with the, with the district on future bond issues, um, and ready to get working, working with Carrie. So happy to answer any questions, but again, just, uh, very happy to be, uh, selected.
Ms. Muselli, just for our record, could you, um, tell us briefly just the number of years your company's been in business? How many of these types of municipal advisor engagements you typically engage in at any time? And then finally, how many park districts, uh, you've had occasion to work with?
Absolutely, so, uh, Spear Financial has been, uh, in business since 1954. Uh, so it's, uh, been municipal advisor since that time. Uh, we're a small company, we have an office in, uh, Chicago and Waterloo, Iowa. 14 employees, so, um, you know, not a large company, but that said, we do, uh, do approximately 200 transactions a year uh, as municipal advisor throughout both Illinois and Iowa, uh, and currently serve over 90 Illinois park and forest preserve districts.
All right, and with regard to the contract, I just pulled it up and was taking a look at it, um, there is a, it's some, it's a bit open about what the final cost to us would be, you have a, you have a schedule, and I think it's Exhibit B, if memory serves me. And, um, yeah, it's Exhibit B, a fee schedule for pre-issuance and issuance services, but in the contract, there, um, is a possibility of doing services beyond that. Would the services beyond pre-issuance, uh, be charged on an hourly basis, or how is that all worked out?
There, there wouldn't be a fee, so, so, uh, planning and post-issuance, you have a question, uh, or something comes up related to a bond issue or planning for, you know, potential future issue, whether that comes or not, um, is, is not something we charge for. We charge, uh, based on when we actually do a transaction and it's based on bond size.
Okay. So the questions I have.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve Spear Financial, uh, as our municipal advisor and, uh, authorize, uh, you to enter into the contract on behalf of the district that was attached, uh, to the, uh, agenda materials for this meeting.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Harren?
I'm sorry.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
All right, motion carries. Finance Committee, general fund over reserve request?
Right, uh, Mr. President, uh, also at our last meeting, we had occasion to discuss, uh, uh, the use of roughly, um, $1 million, um, to, uh, out of our reserve, our excess reserve, uh, to help support the Golf Learning Center pro, uh, project. Uh, some of the specifics of that are set forth in, uh, materials attached to 7C, uh, of our agenda tonight. You can see that, uh, there's a roughly, uh, remaining, uh, in our, uh, funds, $2 million, we'd use $1 million leaving in the reserve of about $1,041,000. Um, that was discussed in full with, uh, various graphs and, um, slides showing us, uh, uh, both how the impact would be upon our surplus, plus why we needed this money for the Golf Learning Center. Finance Committee, again with, I think, six trustees attending, um, uh, voted, uh, unanimously to, uh, recommend to the board that, uh, we use this $1 million from the reserve, uh, for purposes of, uh, the Golf Learning Center project, especially at the critical stage that it's at presently. We hope that this money will be reimbursed to us through, uh, monies that we thought had already been allocated to us. I think everybody knows the story, we don't need to go into it tonight. Uh, however, uh, we fully expect that that money, $1 million, will come back to us, we'll be able to use that money, uh, or replace it back into a reserve when those funds are obtained. So I'll make a motion, but first I'd ask Carrie if she wants to add anything to what I said.
No, I think that was great, unless anyone has questions.
Any questions?
I'd make a motion then, Mr. President, that we allocate $1 million from the reserve, uh, to, um, now, this is the accessory of the reserve, $1 million to the accessory reserve to the Golf Learning Center project, as identified in the materials attached to our agenda.
I second. Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
All right, motion carries.
Just to note for the record, I think I kept saying excess reserve, I meant to say over reserve, but I think everybody knows what I was talking about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, adoption of the 2024 tax levy ordinance?
Right, that also comes from, uh, indirectly from finance. And, uh, this is something we do every year, uh, there was a question actually whether we could pass these all at once, you want us to do them separately?
I, I think it would be prudent to do them separately.
All right, so, um, we're required each year, uh, to pass a tax levy ordinance, I'll let Carrie talk about this at this point.
Sure, uh, so based upon the conversations and, uh, approved budget that occurred in November, this is the actual official levy ordinance that the board is being asked to approve this evening, so it can get filed with the county, um, by the end of, by the last Tuesday of the month to ensure we're able to actually levy taxes next year.
Make a motion to approve the 2024 tax levy ordinance?
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. 8B authorization preparation?
Mr. President, this also comes to the finance committee, this is, uh, a matter in relation to our combined budget appropriation ordinance. I think all of us understand that, uh, the law of the state of Illinois requires a public body such as ourselves to have a budget appropriation ordinance under which we operate. Uh, that obviously has to be prepared, uh, this motion would be to authorize the preparation of that, uh, budget appropriation ordinance within, uh, certain timeframes that are stated within our materials, uh, by the members of our staff. And I would make a motion to, uh, approve item 8B as reflected in our agenda materials.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. 8C, authorization to select proposals for general obligation park bonds.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I interrupted you, I apologize. 8C, um, is our author, is authorization to solicit proposals for your 2025 general obligation park bonds. By the way, the, the, what's in blue in your written materials is incorrect, it should relate to the obligation of park bond, uh, bonds, it's not the budget appropriation ordinance. Am I right? I think that's a typo. I think that's a typo.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, no big deal, I mean, it just, what we're talking about here is our gen, uh, general obligation bonds. As you know, each year, um, we've had, uh, a practice of issuing roughly $5 billion in bonds, I think this is $4.8200,000, of which would be not tax exempt.
Taxable.
You're taxable, right, the remainder would be taxable. Again, this is something we do each year to help us, uh, pay, uh, for the capital projects that we do and talk about on a frequent basis. Uh, we are required to, um, solicit proposals, uh, for the people who will work with us in issuing these bonds. We are required to solicit proposals for the people who will work with us in issuing these bonds. And so, under 8C, what we're seeking is authorization to solicit proposals for the people who do that work. Want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay. So I'd make a motion to approve Item 8C, authorizing the solicitation proposals for our year 2025 general obligation park bonds.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Birchey.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Hill.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Vice President Sierra.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Was 8D? Revised marketing agreement?
Hello, good evening. Oh, this is very loud. Attached, you will find the updated 2025 revised marketing agreement with Central States Media. This has been revised to include the language we talked about when it came to the Board on October 23rd. So that includes the additional workforce profile, work and EEO that goes along with that, that they will present semi-annually to the Board with their efforts, as far as those things are concerned. And then it also changed it from a three-year agreement to a one-year with three options to renew. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I only have one question as it pertains Page 6, the equal employment opportunity. It talks about when the reports will be made available to PPD. I'm assuming that's the staff. So reports will be made available to the staff from Central State 45 minutes after the six-month period.
Yeah, the 45 days. So that is what you guys requested. I know, it's so loud, I'm sorry.
No, I just realized I said minutes, then not days.
You're right. Forty-five minutes, quick turnaround, let's go, guys. I knew what you meant. But those are ones that, since the Board has requested them, we would pass them along to the Board.
Okay. So I guess where I want to steer on the side of caution to make sure we can be as proactive as possible, not only with this contract, but I look forward to having similar conversations with future contracts as well. And we see this with construction projects, is that it's hard to have an accountability conversation as it relates to EEO during the project, right? And I think that 45 days after a project, I mean, that project is, you know, pretty much behind us. When, even, even when it comes to marketing, right? The project is behind us. So if there is any way to push those reports earlier to the Board, that would be my only request. But outside of that, I appreciate you all going to the table with CMS, CSM. Gosh, I am tired, y'all.
It's December.
But I know that wasn't an easy conversation. It's definitely unique. No other municipality are really pushing on their partners in the community, on the private sector, like we just did with this contract. I'm excited. But I, but overall, I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. And I think that traditionally, those workplace profiles come with contract renewal, which is why we added that in, or you guys requested to add that in as a semi-annual process, to have those conversations, why the work is taking place. So I think that this kind of does do what you talked about at the first part of your discussion, where it gives us the opportunity to look at that, why our contract is still underway, to ask for changes, or to change that narrative with them, push them, you know, whatever adjective you guys want to use. That is why that is that semi-annual process than having this conversation every three years. I believe that was my understanding of why you guys wanted those.
No, you're correct. And you just made a great point. So we didn't, we were six months into the year. We review before the end of the year. I guess my question then becomes, we're not happy with that semi-annual progress. We ask them to adjust. We revise at the end of every calendar year. We get that end-of-year report. What if we don't like the end of the year?
It's a one-year contract with an option to renew. So at that point, we would choose not to renew. I do want to, to your point about us, you know, be taking something and taking, pushing something, right? But I do want to also really honor and thank CSM for going on this journey with us, because they don't have to. This is something that certainly they, they were willing to come to the table and try to figure out a way to do this that, that was important to both of us. It's something certainly that they prioritize as an organization. And we had a lot of conversations about when, when we push, right? It has impact on them as well, and the perception of them. And so their willingness to be a part of this journey and to think about how they approach this and how we approach this together, and where those opportunities are for us to collaborate around internships or other opportunities to improve diversity in the field. This is a lot like some of the other things we've talked about, right? That there are, there are some industries where that, where diversity is harder. That, and so especially locally, we see a lot of firms that wouldn't meet that criteria. So for them to be essentially a guinea pig in this process, they didn't necessarily have to do that. They could have walked away. So I do want to express gratitude to them, too. Certainly, it's, it's empowering for us to push policy in the way that we have, and it's right. It also takes a partner, willing partner, to do that with us and to try to think about these things differently. So it's a collaboration that will make all of us stronger, but it is a collaboration that I do think we need to honor.
Absolutely. And I, and I echo that. My last question, at the, every December hit, what's the window to renew the contract?
So at this point, their contract is technically up at the end of January, because that's what their current contract goes to. So per the contract, Trustee Streeter, I think it's, we have to give them 90 days' notice, correct? If we don't want to renew. So that's something that I think we would have those conversations during that six-month renewal time. We, we could always, if it's, if it's teetering on that, is where the Board would like to go with it. You can give them options to improve their performance, so we can have those touch bases. Kind of like how Ashley, this probably isn't the greatest example, but she talked about how within our policy manual, we have those touch bases, where it's like, okay, you have, you know, your performance improvement plan, like, talk to us every 30 days, let's get progress. You know, like, we would do things like that and have that open-ended conversation so they know where we're headed and what it would look like if they didn't improve whatever you would ask them to improve.
And in the second and third years, you can terminate anytime on 90 days' notice.
Got it.
So in those next two years, you have more flexibility to terminate if, if things really aren't going well.
I think my only concern is being that we would have to renew the contract within 90 days of the expiration of that contract. But then we get the reports 45 days, so nearly a month and a half after the reporting period closes. That, that 45 days cuts into that 90 days. Does that make sense?
But if, let's say, end of the first year, 45 days after the end of the first year, you get that report, and you don't like it, and you talk it through with them, and it still doesn't satisfactory, you can give them notice, because you're in the second year, give them notice you want to terminate.
I'm following. Okay, I got you.
So you got that. So we built that in, in the subsequent years, so you have more flexibility.
And, and I just want to add, from like a business perspective, too, to rush that. And we would want, for all of the marketing efforts, we're doing all of the campaigns, which can be a dozen plus at a time, we want as much runway as possible. And I know from both parties, we want to avoid anything like that to begin with. But that is something that you do want the time to do that well, because as an organization, we would suffer if we, which it's your right to do that. We would suffer if we made those hard, fast, rash decisions from a business standpoint.
Absolutely. And Streeter, what you just described is what, what's been clicking in my head, right? So that second-year buffer, but you brought it across. So I have no more questions, but that was, it was a legit concern in that I want to make sure that we are able to really hold them, you know, accountable, but also be supportive of their effort with the understanding that the work isn't going to be easy for them. But also to ensure that we really follow through with the statement that we made with this, because this is a relatively large statement. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Birchey.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Hill.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Vice President Sierra.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. 8E?
Staff recommends approval of the attached administrative agreement between the Heart of Illinois Special Recreation Association and the Park District. This, this agreement was approved by the HISRA Board at their November board meeting. There are no substantive changes to the agreement. There's a couple minor typos, but the primary changes date.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Question? Question?
Yes.
So in the first paragraph, last sentence, it says, "There are no substantive changes to the agreement from the '25 agreement." I assume that's '24.
It should be '24, sorry.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that was the case. And then my other question was, you know, there are a number of these organizations that we do administrative work for. Is, is the cost that we're charging here consistent with the other ones that we do?
It is. Our administrative fee is consistent.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
We have a motion.
I remember we have a motion. Sorry, question. Roll call.
Trustee Birchey.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Hill.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Vice President Sierra.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. 8D, Cornstalk Theater Season Agreement, 2025.
Staff recommends approving the attached 2025 Cornstalk Theater operating agreement. It's very similar to last year, just with the dates changed along with performance dates.
I'll second.
Yeah, I have some questions here. I apologize. Okay, so I don't completely understand the insurance provisions. So there is a liability policy that is $2 million each occurrence. And then there's a DRAM policy with $1 million per occurrence. But nothing said there about the aggregate. Then later, there's a comment about the aggregate. But it didn't appear to me that there was a set number on the aggregate amount of the liability that the policy should have, or did I miss that? Does anybody know?
No, I really don't. We'd have to look, follow that one back up again. Like I said, this is similar to last year, so I'm not sure.
Could you restate your question again, Trustee?
Yeah, so my understanding of insurance policies is that each occurrence typically in a policy has a limit. And then there's an aggregate limit saying that, let's say the limit is $1 million and the aggregate limit is $5 million. And that means that in total, claims can't go over $5 million. It may have $1 million per each, but it can't go over $5 million. So my question here is, it looked to me, I, I thought this was a little confusing, this agreement, but it appeared to have a occurrence, occurrence limitations, and I had no problems with what those were. $2 million, if I'm looking at Page 2, under the Commercial General Umbrella Liability Insurance, a policy with a limit of not less than $2 million each occurrence. Then it says, "If such CGL insurance contains a general aggregate limit, it shall apply separately to this location." Frankly, I'm not sure what that means. And it doesn't give us an aggregate number. I mean, but if what it means is, is that it's up to the insurance company to define the limit, if, if they're going to say the aggregate's $2 million, then what we got is coverage for one incident up to $2 million. Or for several, up to, up to $2 million. I, I just felt that that was quite unclear. And the DRAM shop, it's $1 million per occurrence. And of course, DRAM comes into play here because they'll be selling alcohol. But it's $1 million per occurrence, but it did, did not indicate the aggregate. So, I mean, without trying to be a problem here, and I tried, tried to be a nitpicker, the problem, of course, is, is that these are not problems until they become problems. And when they become a problem, they're a big problem. So I just think that needs to be clarified. I don't want to hold this up. I mean, I suspect we're months away from the season anyway. That's question one. You know, is there an aggregate, and how does that apply? The other question is this. It appears that this agreement runs from January 1 to December 31, I believe. And, but it only applies, I believe, to five shows. So I guess my question here is, why would we have an agreement that runs 12 months when in fact it's only applicable to shows that are taking place between June 1? Well, let's take, there's certainly going to be some practices before that. Let's just say April 1 until roughly mid-September, cleanup after the Oklahoma show. I'm not sure why we have a year's agreement to do that. So those are my two questions.
Okay. Well, it appears then, those are some important questions. Do we need to have our attorneys look at this contract further, based upon Trustee Birchey's concerns, before we take a vote? I don't want to stop, you know, their progress, but there's, you know, some legitimate concerns.
Yeah, I think especially with the insurance. I think it's probably year-round, because they, they occupy the property year-round.
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
Even though they don't have shows year-round.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I may have misunderstood the aggregate thing here, too, but it's.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I've looked at this for years, so we're happy to take a look at it.
Can we bring this?
Yeah. Generally, the, I believe, the baseline language that's here is primarily boilerplate provided by Padearma Risk Pool. The $2 million per occurrence, operationally, and I, I agree, I understand what you're saying, that it talks about a per occurrence, it doesn't actually say what we want your aggregate to be. We have historically taken the per occurrence to also be, if they have more in aggregate, that's great, but the per occurrence to be the minimum aggregate. So the way, I believe, Cornstalk has, has been acting in securing insurance to fulfill this contract, the staff has understood it, and we've understood it from Padearma, the Risk Pool, is that they are, they have $2 million of coverage. Now, we ask that that $2 million have a $2 million per occurrence, not, you know, we have $2 million of coverage with $250,000 per occurrence. And then the sentence about, "If such CGL insurance contains a general aggregate limit, it shall not, it shall apply separately to this location." So if they had multiple locations, I believe Padearma's asking their insurance broker to piece off that they would have an aggregate of $2 million specific to the property under this agreement, whereas if they had five locations and they had a $2 million aggregate that all five fed into, that's not sufficient. I don't know if that helps. We can certainly go back to Padearma and ask for some clarifying language about the aggregate.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I, if, if we can put it off till January, I'd like to do that. I mean, this is, I think everybody knows, there's insurance clauses and indemnification. It's been a big issue for me, so if we could just clarify that, that'd be helpful.
I'll go ahead and modify my motion. In the event that we can't, I mean, they don't have any production in January, correct?
No, so you just move to defer. I had to pick between defer and table, and I had a moment, so defer to the next meeting. Yeah.
Could they use the lab theater?
I'll move to table. Hopefully, I use that.
No, I'd defer or postpone, technically.
I'll defer to our first January meeting to vote on this.
That's good, thanks.
Do we need a?
You should probably vote on that, so you need a second.
I'll second.
Question? Trustee, you have a question?
They have a lab theater, too, right? And this covers at the lab theater also, right?
Because that's in the winter.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
They have the lab theater in the park also. This covers a lab theater, right?
Yeah, so.
Because there are two, there are two locations there.
Yes, and there's, this is the annual operating component of the agreement. There is an underlying land lease associated with the. There is an underlying land lease associated with the winter playhouse and the summer playhouse, which is probably, oh, look at you, Bill, do you remember how old that agreement is?
1966.
That's not fair on your last day, is it?
It's 1966. There's a whereas that tells us it's 1966.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to make sure that you don't have a production in the.
No, this is specific to the use of the tent. The other is, that's the lease part.
Agreement for that.
Yeah, that's like the building versus the land. It's one of those weird ones that we have. This is specific to the tent and the impact of those shows on usage of the park.
Okay. And so, but they have a separate agreement then for the?
Not an operating agreement. No, it's just the lease for the.
Oh, just lease, okay.
Which I believe the underlying lease also had, well, I'm sure the underlying lease has some amount of indemnification and insurance language in it also.
Now, my other question, now, since this has arisen, aren't these agreements viewed by our attorneys before we get them to the board?
I believe this was a number of years ago. And then, because it doesn't really change every year, they don't bring it back to me to say, "Look at what you looked at last year and the year before and the year before." So, and honestly, I don't recall the last time I did. But I do recall at some point going on.
It wouldn't have been very long ago because we would have dealt with the indemnification since, sorry, trustee Birchey joined the board. That would have been sometime in the last three years at the very latest.
That presents a problem for me now. In the future, when we have these type of agreements, is it possible that our attorneys can look at these before it comes to the board? So that we, I mean, this could have been a problem.
Sure.
Problem for us.
Absolutely. So, the, yes, when it was just a date change, we had agreed that we wouldn't, yes, we will. I'm making a note.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Any, not just this particular case, because I mean, I love Cornstalk. I attend a lot of their performances.
Sure.
But I just want to make sure when we do these agreements, because I'm under the impression that our attorneys have already viewed these and looked at it, so.
And so, from the perspective of when you change the year on the date, I think we assume the same thing. But clearly, there's new language and concern, so we'll address it and bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
All right. Any other questions? So this has been.
Yes, I'm motioning to defer.
Preferred, I mean deferred until.
To the next meeting in January.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Okay.
So, you still need a vote?
We do need a vote.
On the motion to defer.
Correct, which trustee Birchey had seconded.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra? President Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The park board and committee meeting scheduled for receiving file?
This reflects the direction of the board, a previous strategy meeting. We do note that this is a test run because it does, the policy manual that we've talked at length about this evening includes a clause for standing committees. Some of those standing committees under this structure do not meet separately. But it is our intent that, per board direction, we try this process. And then if this is something that we want to adopt fully, then we will bring to you a policy manual change per the agreed-upon structure to do that. At present, we have a strategy meeting of the whole on the second Wednesday of every month. And on the fourth Wednesday of every month, we have finance meeting. But I note that in January, the way the meetings fall because of the IAPD IPRA conference, we will have a single meeting in January on January 15.
Okay. Also with this, I want to remind the board, I am bringing back the Citizens Advisory Committee also as well that we had discussed before. Now, if anyone has any other members or names in the community, please bring them forward. Because I have, I have some names and numbers, names of some members in our community that will be going on this committee. I do want it to get started come 2025, so I'm letting the board know if anybody have any suggestions. Please, please bring that forward. Okay. Any other questions? Now, we're going over to nine. We have the counter of consent items. Is there anything here that anyone wants to bring notice to? Yeah, go ahead, trustee.
I, I do have a question. I would like to take out, send a brief question regarding nine D and E. David and Anna.
Second.
Question? I did have one. Well, I don't know how to put this. Do our DEI committee looks at any of these also? Do they get a chance to look at any of these? They don't? I mean, to see where, like the janitorial servers and equipment servers, the people that are, that we do business with?
We haven't. I will say that currently, the only contracts that come before us are related to construction. But it is something contracted services that's in our budget. I think it's like $3 or $4 million that we spend on annually. That will include taking a deeper dive into all of our contracted services, which is going to be janitorial construction. So, Carrie and Emily, we discussed that. Emily sent me a follow-up on that. Did you want to chat about that?
Just quickly, I would say that the same, the policies for EEO compliance and workforce profile are included in this packet. So those, all of that packet is, those things that are part of that DEIA conversation are included here for board review.
Okay.
But to answer your question, Mr. Johnson, you're totally right in that we don't review any other contracts outside of capital in the DEIA.
But you don't review those prior to, the committee doesn't, right. You don't, you don't approve, you don't look at those prior to them coming to the board. You approve the policy that is applied to them. And that's the same thing that is happening here with like eight C, nine C.
I think what Mr. Johnson's getting at is the committee having some sort of input before these sorts of contracts, any contracts outside of capital come to the board, and the answer is no.
With the exception of the application of the policy that is applied here when they're signing off on the same paperwork. So your policy is applying to them in that we're asking them to certify that they do the EEO work, and we ask them to provide the workforce profile. So you are influencing it, if that makes sense.
No, it makes sense, but I just want to be clear, both things are true. The DEIA were reinforcing a practice. Mr. Johnson, to answer your question, we're not reviewing anything.
You're not, outside of the capital. Okay.
I think he's asking you if you're looking at the, are you asking if they're looking at the before they come to the board?
Yeah, because sometimes in the past.
That's okay, we're not doing it.
He says, but you don't do it for capital either. Because you approve the policy, which is governance. And then the staff reviews them for their, are they, are they responsible? Do they meet the criteria? And then they come to the board for approval. So you're, you're applying the same governance to these that you do to capital. That's the only clarification I want to make.
No, well, I think that's great. The point that Emily raised is totally correct in that the projects that we do review that are contracted are capital. It's not a pre-approval or an approval process. It's during the project, or when the project's in awardage, and then review the project as it closes. So Emily's right in that we don't do a pre-approval or approval process of the project.
Okay.
But I think it's also accurate to say that we don't review these types of contracts at all.
So all of them get the EEO?
Correct.
Signed through, we all do all of those.
Yeah, if you look in the packet, you'll see that they signed off on the EEO certification, and you see a workforce profile for the business.
We can see their work profile.
Yep.
I didn't look at it, this particular one, but I just assumed that DEI had already. Okay, I got it. Okay, there was a motion?
For nine eight three.
Yeah, eight C.
Is there any questions on those three? Roll call.
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, nine D?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I just, I am curious. Nine D is an engineering project, nine E is an engineering project. They don't have to be bid since they're professional services contracts. But the question I have is, just, I'm curious, what, as Becky thinks about this, or whoever's in particular in charge of these things? Well, I mean, what, what do you think, I mean, what's your analysis system for determining, ah, Hanson Engineering, yeah, we're going to do Hanson Engineering. Or CPP, we're going to do CPP. I mean, what, can you help me out here?
Sure. A lot of it depends on what the type of work is. So if it's structural, if it's mechanical, electrical. And the one for the elevator, that's a unique one because that also involves some architecture. So a lot of it just depends on the type of job. So there are certain consultants that we tend to have better luck with on certain types of work, so.
Is there a particular, in each area, is, would there be a particular engineer that you've gained familiarity with? I know this one. You've gained experience with, that you feel particular comfort when working with them, that they'll do a good job?
Yeah, and sometimes it's not necessarily the actual person, but the company themselves, like we've had relationships with. And then when you get new ones, then a lot of times we'll try those out and see how they work, too, so. But yeah, you, you figure out which ones seem to work the best with the Park District in different areas, depending on the scope.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. President, I, nothing dramatic here. I just, I was kind of interested in the thinking process here and whether we had specific engineers that provided that degree of of satisfaction that's been described here. So I'm going to move to nine D and E.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Do we have any pending business?
No, sir.
Is there any citizens' request addressed to board?
No, sir.
Communications? Other business, I do have one before I say, does anyone else have anything on other business? I, oh.
Race for it. Mine's very quick. I should have told you during the executive director's report that tomorrow is the maiden voyage of our fully-electric van from purchasing. So if you see a giant white van driving around Peoria, it's us. And it's fully-electric, not yet, because we just got it. But it's giant, so you'll see it and it kind of like stands out. But we're very excited. They've been practicing in the equipment services parking lot, fully-electric van out and about tomorrow. So we're very excited for that. Trustee Herren, I hope you're still listening. The purchasing, it's a purchasing van, so it does our inner-office deliveries. Yep. Anyway, sorry, thanks.
Thank you.
Just two things very quickly. First thing being Moonlight Holiday Gift Shop, favorite time of the year. I think we have seven days that it'll be open between now and December 23rd.
Is it at the airport?
It's at, they do have the gift shop, but you have to go through the airport. It's located, the holiday pop-up shop is located at Luthy Botanical Garden. I don't have the dates in front of me. Emily, do you have those?
It's this coming Friday and Saturday, and the next Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
All day, or what hour?
In the evenings. So it's a part of Luthy Lights, when Luthy Lights is open, so five to 8:00 p.m. after dark, the pop-up shop will be open, and you can stop in and purchase things and everything there. The proceeds go to support Moonlight Coalition for Adult Learning. Thank you.
For sure. And the only other thing, this being our last meeting, happy holidays. This is, I think I'd be remiss if not to say, this has been a, quite a year for me personally, but also for us at the board. Right? I think we've seen a variety of projects, but also a great amount of passion come through. And in reflection, as I do at the end of every year, I'm humbled to be a part of this, but also just greatly appreciative and have a growing respect for a lot of the sacrifices that we have around this horseshoe. So, great 2024, right? Strapped in for 2025, and I really do enjoy every moment here. So thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Okay.
And just, I can ask, if I can ask that we, at our next strategic committee meeting that we discuss policy approval procedure, just so we can clarify for everybody.
That's a good point.
No.
Nothing?
Nope.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. All righty. I just wanted to make clear, you know, we always get complaints when we do things wrong. I want to say something, but when I hear things about our staff, that they've done things right, you know, people usually don't want to, you know, say anything about that. But there is one individual here that, I, only reason I'm saying this is because I've heard from maybe three different types of groups of individuals, different cultures, actually. And this one name always come up about their professionalism, how they interact with the public, and their patience. And they say he always smiles all the time, and he's easy to work with. And that's Scott Loftus. I'm sorry, but, but they tell me that. I mean, seriously, I was just really, I don't want to tell you where all the different places I was at, but, and people come up and tell me, you went to Park District, I know who you are, and I don't even know who these individuals are. But your name has come up quite a bit, Scott, in positive ways. And I just want to say, it makes us look good. And I was having a chest all out every day, but I just want to say, keep up the good work. But you all do that, though. Because Scott was on because they, these individuals, these groups had to work with him. But they say that with the other ones, but I just wanted to make that clear. We always talk about, but when they do right, you know, nobody wants to, you know, pat you on the back then. But if you do something wrong, they got you, you know, this kind. But I just want to say thank you, and thank you all. Yeah, we have, we had a very interesting, interesting year this year. But you guys did very well, starting with the leadership on down, the board, you guys, I can't say enough, I really can't. I'm blessed to have this type of people to work with this year. Even though when things, but like my, my dad said this, too. You know, you find out what you're made of when things come against you. Now, now, here we go, here we go. That's what you find out what you're really made of. When everything's going good, yeah, yeah. But when we have the controversies and all of that, we're still here. We're still going through. And it's all because of you all, well, and the good Lord. I have to say, I'm a praying person, too. I got to give God praise and glory. I don't know if I should say that or not. But I do have to do that, but thank you all. We really do appreciate it. Unfortunately, I'm going to see two members of this board leave, and I'm not too happy about that. And Mr. Birchey, thank you for all of the work that you've done with us. We really do appreciate it. Ms. Covington, you as well, you've been a very great accent. You guys have really brought a lot of things to the board.
Were you stuck with this for four more months, right?
Well, yeah, but I do have a citizen advisory committee, too. Hello. I ain't through with you, yeah. So I do have that. So, and your area, too, so. Anyway, but thank you all. I really appreciate the work that you guys done and the board. You all have brought a lot of great things to, to the Pierre Park District, because the Pierre Park District is second to none. I don't know. I believe it, and I truly talk about it. And we're getting ready to go, Lord willing, to Chicago again, to the, to the state conference. And once again, Peoria will be recognized for the work that we do here, and it's all because of you all. And even the city believes that we do a great job, because they continue to help us. And we have to have a jewel right here in this community that people don't even realize that we do. Because I see what you do behind the scenes. The public doesn't. But you did a great job, each and every one of you that are here. And I just want to say thank you all. And great, and may the good Lord bless each and every one of you, and that you have a great holiday season. And just thank you all. Appreciate it.
And Robert, to you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Wasn't jumping the gun.
Second.
All in favor?